Call the meeting to let the record show that this is a regular city council meeting held on Monday, September 19th. All members of council are present. The press has been duly notified and they're choosing to be somewhere else. Would everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council is going to remain standing for a moment of silence. If you would like to join us, feel free to do so. Thank you very much. Before we get into the agenda, I'd like to recognize a couple of people are hanging out with us. First is the GOV Econ class from over in Fort Mill High School. These are students of Fort Mill who are coming here to see what we're doing for a GOV Econ class, which is a college credit, which is always good to get your college credits in high school where your parents don't have to pay for them in college. And the other is Pact 108, Den 12. They're back there in the corner there. They've come to see what we're doing here. I think that's part of a merit badge. So, welcome to you guys. Item number one on the agenda is a joint public hearing with the Planning Commission. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Jerry Church as the Chair of the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this point, I'd like to open up the special Planning Commission meeting for September 19th, 2016. We are missing three of our commissioners, Doug Byrne, Stephen Handel, and Arnold Mann. We do have a quorum, and at this point, I guess we're going to go with the first order of business, which is the call to order the public hearing regarding rezoning of Tax Map 644-00-00-001 from RUD in the county to R-PH in the city. And I think Susan has some information for us.
Thank you all. The applicant is proposing to annex and rezone approximately 10.29 acres along Gardendale Road as a residential patio home district. The total proposed residential density would be a maximum of 2.82 gross units per acre or 29 patio homes. Approximately 2.6 acres or 25% of the total acreage is common open space, and in addition, the developers proposing includes a formal garden, park areas, and amenity. The intent of the residential patio home district is to allow developers' design flexibility and return for site plans utilizing single-family detached dwellings and private yards rather than a multifamily unit. Specific development standards are outlined in Section 19156 of the zoning code. The minimum lot size required for a patio home is 6,000 square feet, and the minimum lot width is 60 feet. The front setback required is 25 feet. The rear setback is 15 feet, and the side setbacks are two feet on the patio wall side and 10 feet on the other side. And these standards, as outlined on the proposed sketch plan, would meet all those standard requirements. And for the record, we will note that Mr. Handel has joined us. The subject property is located in an area identified in the 2015-2025 Comprehensive Plan and future land use map as containing a mix of uses that would integrate flexible design standards compatible with the principles outlined in the plan. It's also generally the location that was identified as a future growth area in the plan. In addition, the housing element of the 2015-2025 Comprehensive Plan indicates that a shortage of transitional or step-down homes for aging population from large, single-family homes to smaller homes that require less maintenance in the patio home product would meet this need. Staff believes that the annexation and rezoning is appropriate because one, it's compatible with the 2015-2025 Comprehensive Plan, and it is a site in an area that was identified for annexation. Therefore, staff recommendation is for approval. At this time, I would like to introduce Matt Mandel and Matt Leveque with ESP Associates, who are the designers for this product. Kent Olson with Development Solutions Group is also here should he answer any questions. I believe Matt has a short presentation for you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and Planning Commission. We appreciate this opportunity. Matt Leveque with ESP Associates, 3475 Lakemont Boulevard in Fort Mill. And we're here on behalf of Development Solutions Group to present to you this exciting project called Villas at Gardendale. See if I can get this. There we go. So Susan did a great job of outlining the site itself, the total acres, and the product. And what we'll do is we'll just try to highlight a little bit further on some of that and just discuss the proposed use and as proposed zoning. The site itself...
I was doing it here.
Alright. The site itself is located off Gardendale Road. It's about 10 acres, and it's just behind the Gold Hill Middle School. That's probably the best way to describe the location. And here's an aerial of the site. You can see how it's partially wooded in some of the areas, and there's also some open areas towards the front and the northern tract as well. This is an overview of the area, and what we've tried to do is highlight some of the current projects that are in the city as well as the city's boundary lines. And it does a great job of really showing how it fits into the fabric of the Tegu-K current perimeter and the zoning lines and areas. It's directly adjacent to the previously approved Cadence PDD as well as just south of the Game On PDD as well, and then north of the Lakewood PDD. So it's really centrally situated between quite a few, you know, popular and recent PDDs for the area, as well as, as everyone's aware, the Stonecrest, the larger ones to the north. The next slide is a site plan of the property. And what will be done here, as you can see on your handout, we've tried to just outline it, create a cheat sheet essentially, that'll give you a brief summary. So it's a smaller community, and what Development Solutions Group's looking to do is just really fit a niche here, not create something too grand, but something more boutique, something that a buyer and a potential homeowner there would be looking for, a smaller community, a smaller fabric without all the grand amenities, but somewhere that where they could can downsize, utilizing that patio home concept as well as try to find that tight-knit community. So the plan itself is outlined. There is going to be one access pulling off of Gardendale Road, and then coming in to the site itself. We are proposing one stub road to the south, which would help for future development and growth with the city. To the north, we do have a turnaround area. It can be a stub road if desired, but that's part of the Cadence PDD, so not sure of future plans on if there would be a desired connection there. Open space overall, what's required in the district, and the unique part about this project is we are going for like a residential patio home district, which exists in your ordinance today. So it's not stepping outside the lines of something that you're familiar with or that has already been approved as a section of the ordinance. And we're just following those districts and those items. So you can see we're providing 25% at a minimum open space for the site itself. We do have perimeter buffers around the site as well. There's a 40-foot along Gardendale with a 20-foot buffer around the rest of the perimeter. And then based on some of the feedback previously from Planning Commission, we are providing a trail to the north along that frontage as well of Gardendale. So minimum lot size, as Susan outlined, 6,000 square feet, and the minimum lot width in this district is 60-foot wide lot. The front setbacks are 25, and then the side yards, there's a 10-foot building separation required, and the way the patio home district's written is minimum of at least two on one side or eight on the other. So it does allow that product, which sometimes can have that open space towards the side of the building itself, it allows it to function and flow very well. And some of the benefits are with this product and this zoning district, it is age-targeted. The HOA is going to provide the yard maintenance for the community. And then what you see in front of you is the preliminary sketch plan, which is accompanying the zoning, but it is in compliance with the patio home district. Staff's recommended approval. As Susan mentioned, it is compatible with the comprehensive plan and in the city's projected area for annexation. And then the last slide is just some character photos and analysis of the open space area. One of the challenges we're focusing and finding ourselves going into everywhere are the mail kiosk, and how do you really integrate that into a community without having the mailbox out front anymore? And we're finding out that these are actually becoming like social areas as well. So it's a unique way to really meet your neighbor as well as have an area to sit, read the mail. We're finding out you always need a trashcan there now because everyone gets their mail and they need to put it somewhere. So as more and more of these are going in the community, we're finding out what works and what doesn't. So that was really the focus here, was providing a unique area that could benefit all the communities, all the neighbors in the community. It's centrally located as well as trying to provide some gardens and some kind of like English-style garden areas for them to all enjoy. So that helps give you a perspective of the type of community they're looking for. And at this time, Kent Olson is also here to answer any questions if you had more product-specific questions, but be more than happy to assist on that as well.
Okay, thank you, Matt. I guess before we start with the public, does anyone...
You're turning it back to us for questions now?
Yeah, before we get to the public, I'm not even sure if anybody signed up.
Dottie?
I'm okay.
David?
Yes, sir.
Ryan?
None for me.
Jen?
Actually, I had some questions regarding the finishes.
That's the reason why I went that way.
Well, in fairness, Kent already told us.
I was hoping someone else would ask. Oh, okay. Yeah, I was curious about the finishes. Vinyl would be one of those considered?
Currently, what's proposed and the intent of the development is for no vinyl or the basin ray, hardy plank type product, and I think Kent can expand on that some more.
Good evening, Kent Olson, Development Solutions Group, 11121 Carmel Commons Boulevard in Charlotte. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you tonight. Although it's not in your ordinance, we are proposing a quality product, so I would gladly volunteer to have it written in this approval. However, Charlie and Susan saw fit to have it in there that we won't do any vinyl, and we would guarantee two-car garages.
Okay.
And because the goal is for it to be a maintenance-free community, and also it's kind of what we see, we learned a whole lot through a past project we were working on that so many folks want to age-in-place in Tegu-K and want an opportunity to do so. And we heard that loud and clear a few months ago. So that's the reason that you see the project in front of you today, is to a little boutique, 29 homes, but appeal, hopefully kind of set a standard for others to follow it.
Okay, and what is the price point that's being targeted as well as the square footage that the range is?
Yeah, square footages will be from 1,800 square feet to... We haven't picked our builder yet, so I can't get specific until you exactly what their range, but we feel confident the minimum will be 1,700. They'll probably reach as high as 2,600 if they take and do some unfinished area, maybe a loft area, but most of these are all one level.
Okay.
And price points will be from the mid-200s and up.
Okay, and you thinking three-bedroom or two and three-bedroom or...
Yeah, majority of them will be a three-bedroom.
Three-bedroom.
Yes.
And what is your estimated start date for this project?
I would anticipate that these homes would come online the first quarter of 2018.
[coughs]
Possibly a little bit quicker with the minimal amount of site work involved here, but late next year, early 2018.
And about how long do you think the project would take to be completed? Like you said, it's a boutique, so it's not as many as you know that...
Yeah, this should sell out. If our economy holds up, this should easily sell out the first year.
That many years, yeah, okay. Great, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Kent, you know you've been here before us, before with the Windhaven Project, where there was a donation of 20 acres plus $400,000 for that 20 acres. We had a guy, the gentleman from Cadence here, where he donated some land to the city so that, or we did a land swap with him, and the city wound up with more land so that we could do a cellulose fiber place and public storage, a public work storage. I'm not quite sure what the plan is for this project for a benefit for the city.
I feel the benefit for the city comes in providing a good alternative for the residents. As far as hard land, it's just such a small, the project is such a small scope, I really don't have the opportunity to provide or to give the city any hard land. We haven't looked at any kind of a per-door fee. In all honesty, it was such a small boutique project, we thought that it was just meeting a need for the current residents of Tegu-K.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And council, come up with anything else in the meantime? No?
Just to clarify, was Cadence determined to be age-targeted as well?
There is age-targeted Cadence, yes. Jerry, it's back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not sure if we have any questions, but if we don't, I'd like to open it up for public comments. Does anybody sign up? I'm saying no.
I don't hear anything.
Okay, so, I'll give us one more shot. Do we have any questions? If not, alright, do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second motion. Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, we're closed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Item number two on the agenda are special presentations. Item number 2A is Eagle Scout. Item number 2B is the Lions Club World Site Day. Item number 2C is the Constitution Week, and item number 2D is the recognition of a Community Planning Month. So I'm going to switch back up to there, if you don't mind.
Well, I didn't hear that. I like that. I felt like I was doing that anyway. Yeah.
Whereas, this is a proclamation recognizing Eagle Scout Nathaniel John Robert Shive. Whereas Nathaniel Shive has proven himself to be an outstanding member of the Boy Scouts America, and whereas it takes many years of dedication and commitment to achieve the Eagle Scout rank, and whereas Eagle Scouts acts as leaders and role models in the community, and whereas the Eagle Scout rank is a distinction that will follow him throughout life and be a beacon to others for his leadership quality and commitment this young man has shown, and whereas his project, including refurbishing a picnic area at his church, faith assembly in Rock Hill, now therefore be proclaimed that the mayor and the council of the city of Tegu-K do hereby congratulate and recognize Nathaniel John Robert Shive for his achievement towards the rank of Eagle Scout, and we are proud to have him as a member of our community.
Congratulations. We expect great things out of you, alright?
It's like we're already getting some. Come this way. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's coming along.
Can I ask a question?
Thank you.
What Eagle Scout is he that Luther Dasher has put through the program?
How many?
102.
So he's 102.
Well, he's 102.
So there are three more coming through. Excellent.
Pretty good.
Excellent. That answers that question.
Yeah.
Then we have the Lions Club World Site Day proclamation. Whereas the World Health Organization has estimated the number of blind people in the world has doubled in the next 25 years, and Lions Club World Site Day aims at heightening the awareness and education about site prevention and preventable blindness. Whereas Lions World Site Day, which is October 13th, 2016, the Tegu-K Lions work in unison with the Lions Club around the world to educate millions of people of the importance of proper eye health care. And whereas in last year, the Tegu-K Lions Club collected almost 3,300 pairs of eyeglasses to be repurposed and paid for 10 complete eye exams and brought five pairs of glasses. Whereas the Tegu-K Lions Club screens 6,736 local children with their PediaVision instrument, detecting 702 with sight problems, a 10.42% referral rate. And now therefore, the mayor and the council of the city of Tegu-K do hereby proclaim October 13th as Lions World Site Day in the city of Tegu-K. And I'm going to ask Jerry Church to come up and accept this proclamation.
Thank you very much, Jerry. Thank you. I understand you're a picture, smiling, ready to stand and pose. Remember that for your wedding day. Alright, roll set. Alright.
At this time, I'm going to turn the meeting over to the Lions Club because they want to do a little demonstration about the PediaVision equipment that they have. And they, the Lions Club raised $5,000 for this equipment that they go around all of York County, and they screen young people and find a lot of, as we said, sight problems. And that was something they raised for their own. They're looking to get another one, so if anyone is so inclined to help the Lions Club with their next PediaVision equipment, they would greatly appreciate it. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Jerry Church, President of Lions Club.
Alright, if you can allow us just a few minutes, maybe dim the lights for a little bit. We're going to demonstrate the camera. This is the one that we screened almost 8,000 folks with. Let's see if I can read this. Alright. As they get ready, I'm going to find some talking points that I was sent. I don't get to touch the camera very much. These guys are professionals. I just, you know, I just work in the club and, yeah, alright, alright. Have you picked, have you picked somebody yet?
Yeah, we got it. What's your name? Shannon.
Alright. Alright, Shannon. Y'all go ahead and set up, and as you set up, I'm going to find this thing again. I lost it for a second. You need to sit down, right?
No.
Oh, you can do it standing up?
Yeah, we can do it standing up.
Okay, as they get ready, I will find this. Keep going, keep going.
No lights. On your head?
On your head.
Where are the lights?
Yeah.
They don't dim, they just...
Yeah, I had it for a second, I lost it. I have so many. Alright, keep going, go ahead and get ready.
While you're watching, you're going to the lights.
Yeah, go ahead and get the lights. Yeah, go ahead. I've got the talking points here. Alright, ready? Okay, I'm just going to read this. In a darkened room across from three feet away, he's going to point the camera. And between one and 10 seconds, adults and children tend to detect what if anything is wrong.
We've got talking lights here. And on screen, if...
Sorry.
Fine, so your vision is based on the parameters of your, the limits that are set on here. You're okay. If someone's watching here and your glasses look wrong, I'm going to show you how it comes up.
Well, I don't know how much time we have, but you saw how easy that was. And think about it, a child from six months can be tested with this, and you can detect things at a very early age. By the way, this camera costs about $8,000, and it costs about $900 a year to keep and upgrade, so...
Everybody came up with the light, the lighting accessible with eye came up with that. Basically, there are, there are numbers in here that have mean, and of course, you know, we don't, we don't play this as diagnosis.
Under HIPAA, we don't want to give the numbers out under HIPAA.
No, no.
This is all fort with liability here.
Right.
I'm just getting excited now, but...
This can be used to do diagnosis as well. I guess it's not going up to that point. But anyway, we don't do that for diagnosis.
Yeah, according to this, of the 6,700, about 44% were referred, and 21% had myopia, whatever that is, so...
But there are other problems, so you have to diagnose that.
Alright.
Stigmatism is...
Alright. Yes. Thank you. Thank you for giving us some time. You're welcome.
Now, just to calm the lawyer side of the council, there's no liability, we didn't diagnose anybody, we have no idea, go see a physician.
Amen.
Constitution Week proclamation. Whereas September 17th, 2016 marks the 239th anniversary of drafting of the Constitution for the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition of this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebration which will commemorate the occasion. Whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuance of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States, designating September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week, now therefore be proclaimed that the mayor and the council of the city of Tegu-K, that the week of September 17th through the 23rd will be Constitution Week, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideas of the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering the lost rights may never be regained. And I'm going to ask Jen Stalford, who is a member of the Daughters of the American Revolution, to come down and receive this. Y'all think this is fun and games. Community Planning Month proclamation. Whereas a change is constant and affects all cities, towns, counties, and communities, rural areas, and other places, and whereas community planning and plans can help manage this change in a way that provides better choices for how people work and live, whereas community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be meaningfully involved in making choices that determine the future of their community, and whereas the full benefit of planning requires public officials and citizens who understand, support, and demand excellence in planning and planning implementation. Whereas the month of October is designated as National Community Planning Month throughout the United States of America and its territories, and whereas the Planning Association and its professional institute of American Institute of Certified Planners endorsed the National Community Planning Month as an opportunity to highlight the contributions sounds planning and planning implementation make for the quality of settlements and environment, the celebration of National Community Planning Month gives us the opportunity to publicly recognize the participation and dedication of the members of the Planning Commission and other citizen planners who have contributed their time and expertise to the improvement of the Tegu-K South Carolina. Whereas we recognize many valuable contributions made by professional community and regional planners of Tegu-K, York County, and the state of South Carolina, to the extent our heartfelt thanks to the continued commitment to the public service by these professionals. Now therefore, the mayor and the council of the city of Tegu-K proclaim Community Planning Month in the city of Tegu-K in conjunction with the celebration of the National Community Planning Month. And I'm going to ask Susan Britt to come and receive this. Our planning director.
I'd also like Jerry Church, our planning commission chair.
Alright, Jerry, come on here too. Alright, get on the routine, picture your lawn, stuff, get ready. Just got your thing. Jerry.
Item number three on the agenda is an executive session.
Council entertain a motion for an executive session.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to make a motion to enter to executive session for contractual matters regarding purchase agreement for tax map number 6430401073. That's what I got here.
Yeah. American Tower.
I'm reading requested action on the bottom right now. All right, I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss contractual matters regarding American Tower consent agreement. How about that?
A motion by Ryan Richard. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dottie Hersey. Any discussion? There being none, call the question. All in favor, sing or saying aye.
Aye.
We're in executive session.
So when the vote comes up, all in favor say aye. We still say aye? Yes. Because this did not come out.
You have to help him out.
Counsel is back in open session. While in executive session, no votes were taken. Other returned to open session. Item number four on the agenda is public comments. And I have Bill Morgan, who wants to comment to us. Welcome. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, please.
My name is Bill Morgan. I'm resident of Tugah K at thirty-twelve Point Clear Drive. I was here about a year ago and talked with the mayor and the council about the possibility of doing some dredging in the lake there at the end of Point Clear. One of the things that I've noticed is the last two or three heavy rains that we've had, the trench that runs between Point Clear Drive and Kalua Circle dumps a great deal of red silt into the lake. I've been surprised that the EPA or Duke Energy hadn't said something about it before. I would recommend either a catch basin before it gets to the lake to pull some of that silt out, or at the very least, putting check dams along that trench so that that water doesn't just rush down, taking Tugah K's land and putting it in the lake. And I would love for you to take back that land and put it back where it came from. Then I wouldn't have to do the dredging. But I would recommend that something be done to prevent that from continuing to happen.
Thank you. Charlie, we had this discussion last year, did we not? How did, what did, what did we do? What are we planning on doing or...
Mayor, I'd have to check, go back and check my notes. I know staff investigated it. I know that when the request came in to dredge, I believe that council gave them permission to. They asked if they could put it on our property. And to be honest, I'd have to go back and check my notes where we ended up with that. I know there was a piece of pipe that was, a storm drain pipe that was of concern. It was old abandoned, wasn't tied to anything. Whether or not we've removed that yet, I've got to check with operations. But I'd be glad to circle back around with staff tomorrow morning on, on this issue and see what's what and get a update sent back to council.
Would you also include Mr. Rosen in the, in the email to council so he's aware of what we're, we're planning to do?
Is his contact info on the...
I have it here. I'll give it to you before I go.
Yes, sir.
All right. Item number, any other public comments? I'm sorry. There being none, enclosed public comments. Item number five on the agenda is the approval of minutes. Counsel, before you weigh the minutes from the August fifteenth council meeting, are there any questions or deletions to those minutes? Hearing none, those minutes stand approved. Item number six on the agenda is unfinished business, which is the second reading of an ordinance from City Manager Charlie Funderburke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Tonight, we have before you the second reading of an ordinance to account for the, the revenues and the expenditures for the FY sixteen-seventeen fiscal year. Council has given a favorable first read on this ordinance last month at your regular meeting. Just as a quick recap, it does envision general funds, the general fund at eight million four hundred and ninety-four thousand five hundred and five dollars, the beach and swim center at two hundred and one thousand two hundred and five dollars, the utilities enterprise budget at four million three hundred and twenty-two thousand eight hundred and twenty-two dollars, stormwater at four hundred and eighty thousand dollars, events and tourism at seventy-three thousand seventy dollars, and hospitality tax at a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. As council has already given a favorable first read, we would ask for a favorable second at this time.
Thank you, Charlie. Counsel entertain a motion?
I got it. Hang on. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the second reading of an ordinance to, for the receipt of revenues and the accounting of expenditures for fiscal year twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen.
I have a motion by David O'Neil. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ryan Richard. Any comments from council? Ryan?
None.
Jen? Dottie? David?
No.
I just want, I just have a couple of comments. One, I'd like to thank staff and council for putting the work in to get this budget done. I think this is probably one of the soonest years that we've been able to get it done so quickly. If it's not the soonest, it's probably close to one of the soonest.
I don't know about soonest, but definitely one of the, I think, probably the, the easiest process.
Right.
Requiring the least amount of...
Meetings.
Back and forth and back and forth with lots of meetings.
And it's not that, it's not that we're just rubber stamping what, what staff recommends or the city manager recommends. We've had workshops, July twentieth, we had a workshop that we went through the budget items and, and discussed everything that went through. So it's just not a rubber stamp. And for that, at this point, I will call the question. All in favor, single or saying aye?
Aye.
Unanimous. Item number seven A on the agenda is the Planning Commission recommendation. Susan Britt.
Got to be quick.
The Planning Commission recommends approval of the annexation and rezoning for tax map number... I have my gen in front of me. Six four four zero 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 one, from RUD in the county to residential patio home in the city. Along with that recommendation, they also recommend that council accept the voluntary commitment from the developer regarding no vinyl. And also, the developer has agreed to work with an easement for trail and street connections and to work with the city on a trail that would run along the northern side of this property, along with the city's property, to make a connection to Gulltown Middle School.
We weren't trying to trip you up there with the, with the podium backwards.
Yeah.
But you did well. Yeah.
We really need to put that thing on wheels. Item number seven B on the agenda is the introduction of a first reading with ordinance to annex tax map number. City Manager Charlie Funderburke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As required by law, we have had the public hearing at the beginning of this meeting for this proposed annexation and rezoning. As council has just heard, Planning Commission's recommendation for the annexation and rezoning of six four four zero 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 one. This is a hundred percent annexation petition and the request to rezone from RUD, which is rural residential in the county, to residential patio home or RPH in the city.
Thank you, Charlie. Counsel entertain a motion?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, motion to approve the introduction and first reading of an ordinance to rezone tax map number six four zero 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 one as part of a one hundred percent annexation petition from RUD in the county to P, I mean to, RPH in the city.
I have a motion by Jen Stalford. Do I have a second?
I'll second it on the motion number. You missed a four, so it's six four four zero 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 one.
I have a motion by Jen Stalford. I have a second by Dottie Hersey. Council discussion? Dottie?
No.
Ryan? Jen?
I just have one additional question I forgot to ask before regarding RUD for rural residential. Does that allow for multifamily? What does it allow for single?
RUD is, is rural residential development in the county. In the county, what that would permit, it does permit mobile homes. It does, but it permits, does not permit multifamily. It permits single family at a density of one unit per acre. So you could conceivably have ten new single family homes in this area with no green space requirement, no open space requirement, and no amenities.
Thank you, Susan. You good?
Yes.
Call the question. All in favor, single or saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nope.
Let the record show that Councilman Ryan Richard, David O'Neil, and Mayor Shepherd Item number seven C on the agenda is the first reading of an ordinance to amend four eighty-nine, the fiscal year two thousand fifteen sixteen fund budget, general fund budget. City Manager Charlie Funderburke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As is customary each year, and following with best management practices with municipal accounting, we need to amend the FY fifteen sixteen, which is our current general fund budget, to account for additional revenues that were realized and to adjust expenditures to bring them in line with year-to-date actuals as we close out the fiscal year. Our city auditors have requested that we do this at the end of each year, but it is not a requirement to do so. And there is no requirement for, to do so on the enterprise funds. With that, we would like to put forward to council and a, this amendment to ordinance four eighty-nine to amend the general fund budget.
Thank you, Charlie. Counsel entertain a motion?
I'll second it for discussion.
How about making a motion first?
Oh, sure. Yeah, I could do that.
Mr. Mayor...
Go ahead, Ryan.
Are you, I didn't know if you wanted to second or you want to...
No, go ahead. Go for it.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the introduction and first reading of an ordinance to amend ordinance four eight nine fiscal year twenty fifteen through twenty sixteen general fund budget.
Motion by Ryan Richard. I have a second by Dottie Hersey.
You do.
For discussion.
I, I guess I just feel like I need a clarification now about what you're doing. This is not the same as spending extra money yet, right?
There, there is three items that we have included in this where...
That's part of this.
Expenditures have not been spent yet. Those three items would be, two of them are paying off debt, one on a piece of public works equipment...
Okay.
That we've got three more payments for. The other is two payments on a fire truck, as well as the patrol rifles. Those expenses have not been incurred yet.
All right. And so what you're talking about here for the benefit of the citizens is that we, in looking at the current fifteen sixteen general fund budget, we have a surplus.
That is correct.
A much greater surplus than we anticipated. That's always a good thing.
Yes, ma'am.
And we could choose to just save every penny of it, reserve every penny of it. But what we're, your, your recommendation, the city's recommendation, is that we use some of that money to pay off a couple of debts that we have, which is the equipment and then the fire truck.
That's correct.
And to advance funding, if you will, to purchase the remain, remainder of the rifles that were approved as part of the upcoming budget.
Well, you've got, you've got, you've still got four in the upcoming budget?
Okay.
This would replace the, this would allow us to go ahead and purchase the remaining ones so that in seventeen eighteen and eighteen nineteen, you wouldn't have those expenses. We would have already taken care of them now.
Basically, it takes the capital improvement process that we already approved. It just speeds that item up several...
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Very good way of putting it. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Ryan?
Sooner they're equipped, the better.
Jen? David? We now own a ladder truck.
Well, we didn't vote yet.
Oh.
Almost. We're close.
Just saying.
Yeah. Huh. All in favor, single or saying aye?
Aye.
We now own a ladder truck.
There you go.
Item number seven C on the agenda, we just did. Item number seven D on the agenda is the intergovernmental agreement collection of commercials, stormwater fees. City Manager Charlie Funderburke.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. York County actually approached us wanting to amend the intergovernmental agreement that we have with them. Currently, that agreement provides that they will collect our residential stormwater fees as they are now going to start collecting for town of Fort Mill. They've agreed to put provisions in there to not, to collect our commercial stormwater fees as well. Pretty much, that's all that's changed from the last agreement to the current agreement. It did put some kind of cutoff dates, so to speak. They're going to send us a list of who will be on the tax roll. We have to send it back to them with, you know, the amounts, specifically the commercial stuff. Obviously, the residential, you know, is, is a flat fee for, for all residential. But now, we don't have to invoice the commercial customers ourselves. They will include those on the, on the tax rolls based on the amount that we have provided to them, which definitely speeds up that process. We haven't had a problem with collecting commercial, but now we don't have to invoice it and, and things of that nature. So that is the amendment to the agreement, kind of the, the short and sweet of it. So, Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to make a motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement to collect commercial stormwater fees.
Motion by Dottie Hersey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by David O'Neil. Council comments?
No.
Dottie?
No.
Ryan?
Just one comment.
I seem to remember for some reason back there in my, my bowels of my memory that we had to pay something for the, their computer system.
No, so they, they have, initially, they, they had said that and then never invoiced us for anything. And then starting with this current fiscal year, it's fifty-five cents per bill for them to collect it and then remit, payment back to us. And that was part of the current intergovernmental agreement and will be so a part of the...
And we captured that in our budget of the stormwater?
That is correct. Yes.
Call the question. All in favor, single or saying aye?
Aye.
Unanimous. Item number seven E on the agenda is the municipal, excuse me, amendments to the municipal court attorney agreement for indigent defense. City Manager Charlie Funderburke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council.
I'm not saying he's an indigent defense, but...
I may need some. The, if council will recall, last year, we entered into an agreement with, with York County so that their defense attorney, their public defender's office would provide indigent defense as, as required. This is something that is new based on state law that came about last year. We had worked out a formula. Everybody was great with the formula. As they made the adjustments for this year, Rock Hill went down significantly based on the percentage that they would owe, which meant Clover's went up significantly. Clover had a, we'll, we'll say that they, they took exception to, to their, their fee going up by three or four times what had been the previous year. Ours doesn't change at all, but everybody agrees in order to give Rock Hill an opportunity to revisit how they were handling things in their court system to use last year's funding levels, which at the end of the day, it, it affected Fort Mill, Rock Hill, and Clover, and only Fort Mill by a little bit. Ours doesn't change at all. So because they've now gone back and said, okay, we're going to use last year's funding instead of this year's, it required an amendment to the agreement. So, and they need for all the municipalities to sign off on it. So that's what I have before you tonight.
What is the amount that we're funding?
It's less than one percent of seventy-nine thousand dollars.
Okay.
Because that is the cost of the additional public defender that they had to hire to handle these cases at their sal, and we pay based on the number of...
Indigent.
Indigent defense that has to be provided in Tugah K. Our, our percentage makes up less than one percent.
Okay.
So...
Counsel entertain a motion?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to make a motion to approve the amendment to the municipal court attorney agreement for indigent defense.
Motion by Dottie Hersey.
Second.
Second by Jennifer Stalford. Any council discussion? There being none, call the question. All in favor, single or saying aye?
Aye.
Unanimous. Item number seven F on the agenda is the Tugah K Fire Department Services Agreement. City Manager Charlie Funderburke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The current fire services agreement with the TK Volunteer Fire Department is set to expire this year. This agreement has been discussed at length by the TC VFD Board staff. Mayor, thank you for your, your assistance in some of those meetings. They have approved the agreement and are taking it to their membership for final approval. And this agreement was taken into account during the FY sixteen-seventeen budget process. And we would ask for council's favorable approval at this time.
Thank you, Charlie. Counsel entertain a motion?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Tugah K Volunteer Fire Department Fire Services Agreement and authorize the city manager to execute said agreement.
I have a motion by Ryan Richard. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dottie Hersey. Any council discussion? Any council discussion? There being none, call a question, all in favor, sing with saying aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Please, I had questions. I can ask them anyway, can I?
Sure.
It doesn't make any difference. On page two of eight, it says responsible parties, and it says total balance of the fund may increase by one point five percent. What causes that may to be shall?
Wow, nothing.
Right now, it says may, that means they, if they have additional funds from their budget, that they've gotten funding from us, if they did not spend the funding they got from us, then they may keep that additional as part of their reserves. Shall means we're going to have to fund it regardless, we're agreeing to fund it regardless.
Okay, so they may keep it, that means they have to come back to us and ask us? They can just do it?
They, they can, so long as it doesn't exceed that one point five.
Okay.
Which is basically cost of living.
Okay, okay. And then I guess on exhibit, it says that the asset inventory must be verified, when does that verification take?
They are, they're working on that now and, and almost have it completed, it will be attached, initialed and attached, made part of this agreement once they finish.
Okay, doesn't change my vote, does it change anybody else's?
No.
Good. Seven G on the agenda is the TK Fire Department Lease Agreement. City Manager Charlie Funderburke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This lease agreement is part of, or referenced by the Fire Services Agreement. For the most part, it does mirror that, that Fire Services Agreement. This is something that we've actually never had, you know, for those that are playing along at home, watching on television. City of TK does not own the one existing fire department, it's owned by the volunteers through contractual arrangements and agreements, and the goodness of their hearts, they've allowed us, once we went to full-time, to house our city paid firefighters out of there. This is a lease document that allows our, a legal document that allows our, our folks to be in there, and reads like a, like a typical lease. Your city attorney has, has wrote most of it and has approved it after, so a little bit of back and forth with the volunteer fire board, we would ask for council's favorable approval at this time.
Thank you, Charlie. Council?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the TK Volunteer Fire Department Lease Agreement to authorize the city manager to execute said agreement.
Motion by David O'Neill, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ryan Richard. Any council comments? There being none, call a question, all in favor, sing with saying aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Item number eight on the agenda, excuse me, seven H on the agenda is the American Tower Consent Agreement. City Manager Charlie Funderburke.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this agreement was discussed during your executive session at, at the beginning of the meeting, as far as American Tower requesting a consent agreement to operate, I will say, the Verizon-owned cell tower here at the Glennon Center, and I will turn it back over to council for action.
Thank you. Dottie?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to make a motion to not consent to the assignment of certain rights by Verizon to American Tower Corporation.
Motion by Dottie Hersey, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jennifer Stalford. Any council discussion? There being none, call a question, all in favor, sing with saying aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Item number eight on the agenda is the city manager's report. Charlie Funderburke.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I've got a number of things, but I'll try to be as brief as I can. Thank you to Joey Blathen on his hard work on, in putting together the food truck rallies this year, along with this past one on Saturday night, I think they were very successful, and we're looking forward to doing those things again next year. A lot of positive feedback. He's now working with members of the PRT Commission on our fall festival plans. Fall Festival is scheduled for October twenty-ninth at the, up here at the Glennon Center. Last week, the Chamber of Commerce hosted the annual State of the Community Breakfast, I think it was very well attended, many folks here in this room were there. Katie did put a video of Mayor Shepherd's speech out on our social media platforms, for those that may have missed it, it's out there if you want, if you would like to go and, and see that. Right now, we've got sixteen participant, participants signed up thus far for our new Extra Mile program that we started. This is the volunteer program for high school age kids in the area, basically ninth through twelfth grade age kids, homeschool, if they go to private school somewhere, or at Fort Mill High School, or Nation Forward, they want to volunteer and give back to the city, we'd love to have them. Department heads are going to start reaching out to the ones that have signed up thus far to get them started, we've got a variety of volunteer opportunities, or they can bring their own, and we'll, we'll work with them on that, so, good to get that program up and started. Our next Citizens Academy will begin October twentieth. Registration's going on now at City Hall, and the cost is a mere five dollars, so if you haven't signed up yet, haven't attended it yet, we encourage you to do so. We had our first quarterly meeting of, with TC Connect, it was very well attended, and the liaisons are very energized about the program. Thank you to Katie Paulson for the work and effort she's put in there, a lot of great information about this on our website, along with a map, an interactive map, where you can contact your liaison from there, so if you're not sure who your liaison is, click on TK Connect on the city's website, and you'll be able to get to their contact info. This Wednesday, from six PM to eight PM, we've got Ms. Trish Snyder teaching pickleball at our lower tennis courts, for those of us that are interested in the new sport but don't have a clue as to how to play it. When we resurfaced two of our lower tennis courts, we did line it with the pickleball lines, so now we've got somebody that can teach folks how to play that, so that's, again, this Wednesday from six to eight. Our Camp Cadet Golf Tournament is this Friday, Chief Parker tells me that we do have a full field for it, so thank you to everyone that signed up, we are still taking donations and things like that, all the money raised goes to help support that free week of camp that we started this past summer. The disc golf course that council funded last fiscal year, not this fiscal year, but last one, has really been a big success. This Friday evening at six PM, we do have a, actually a professional disc golf player coming out to teach folks how to play and techniques and things like that, apparently you'd make money doing anything these days, but if you're like me and your frisbee or your disc, I should say, typically winds up in the briar patch, this might be a good thing to attend. Fire hydrant bids came in this Tuesday, lowest qualified bidder did come in where we needed them to, price-wise, so we are going to be able to move forward with that. We're hoping to have a contract signed with them, probably later this week, early next week, so that we can get them moving forward. The size of this project, it's probably a ninety-day to a hundred and twenty-day type contract from the time we give notice to proceed, so looking forward to hopefully having that finished up by, by the end of the calendar year, hopefully, weather permitting. Obviously, if we run into a real nasty wet weather, then it may get pushed till...
Yeah, sure.
After, after the first of the year. SEDOT continues to make big strides on repairing TK Drive, their contractors are pairing and placing storm drain lines and outfalls, along with the full-depth patching. Our contractor is out there doing the curb, curb and gutter on the outbound lanes, and once all that part is finished, the DOT contractor will be coming in and milling and resurfacing all of TK Drive from City Hall up to the Fire Department. They are going to be milling through the crosswalks, just so that they can have a better-finished project, product, but they will be restamping them, and we'll be working with them to get those repainted, but it just, it was going to leave too many seams if they stopped at each one, and, and protecting it was going to be a nightmare, so they will mill through them, but no worries that we'll be coming back. We also got a contact from a lady at our TK Connect, asking us for a pedestrian, what's called a pedestrian refuge in the center there at Callaway, similar to the ones at Seven Co's and, and Heron Harbor, the little concrete boundary areas in the middle. DOT's actually approved that, but they said, yeah, sure, y'all can do it, which means we, we would have to pay for it, so we're, they're, they're drawing up the designs and we'll, we'll get a price for it and figure out if that is something that we, we can bite off in the coming fiscal year or not. The county's contractor is making a great headway, Hebergram Way, the girders for the bridge have already been set, they hoped, and council, I know I've sent this to you in an update, hopefully in the coming month, weather cooperates, you'll start seeing stone base going down, along with first, first course of asphalt. Hopefully, if weather continues to cooperate, in November, they'll be pouring the deck for the bridge, and they're right on schedule to be able to open up, you know, first part of two thousand seventeen. Same goes with our, with DOT's contractor out at Gold Hill Road and one sixty, they're continuing to make good strides and seem to be on schedule at this point, again, for an early two thousand seventeen project completion, so looking forward to both of those wrapping up. Lakewood Trails are also moving along nicely, they've actually started putting in the stone base, starting at the entryway and going through the first leg, so they're making good, good progress there, and they should be completed prior to Thanksgiving, I think November twenty-fourth is their contract, contract date. And fire station number two, construction plans are almost complete, actually, our plan review team just completed going over the grading plans and providing comments back. We are targeting a late October groundbreaking, so as we get a little bit closer, Sylvia will reach out to, to council and check your available dates, so that we can get something scheduled for a, for a groundbreaking out there for that, but very pleased with how things are going thus far with that. And, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Charlie. Any questions for Charlie?
Yeah. The fire hydrant contract?
Yes, ma'am.
We don't need to approve that?
Since you've already approved moving forward, it's a standard AIA construction contract, not something that we would typically bring back. I can, if, if council would like for me to, but it's, in the past with like, C-Fund projects and things like that, it hasn't been something that we brought back in the past.
Okay, thank you.
Real quick, just for further clarification, I know I'd spoken with you briefly, but I had a couple of questions, well, citizens had a couple of questions as far as for curb and gutter.
Mm-hmm.
Looked a little wavy on top in some spots, bird baths collecting in certain spots for the rain, so if you'd clarify, I did relay the, with the information you told me to the ones that I asked, but if there's anybody out there wondering?
Sure. Tim Gillette, our operations director and our engineer, are creating a punch list for the contractor, so that it, if there are certain sections that, that need to be addressed, they'll, they'll peel those sections out and re-pour. They won't receive final payment until we've got a, a final finished product, but it's definitely, I, I definitely appreciate the difficulties with, given the, the current road conditions, trying to match the curb and gutter to what's there, knowing what's going to be there is going to be a heck of a lot better, so, but yeah, there, there are definitely a good bit of linear foot that they've already identified, and as they are completing sections, we're, we're continuing to fill out that punch list so that they can go back in, take those areas out. I don't think they're going to do that until after they've poured everything, and then they'll go back in and clean up any of the punch list items to finish up the project. Yes, sir.
I had a question regarding the work for TKD, for the point clear, I've had a lot of residents ask me, one of those piles going to be removed of debris, it looks like maybe topsoil for one, cement for another.
Very, very soon. We've got, on point clear, we've got a common driveway that Forest Main ran up that has to be resurfaced, we're hoping that's going to be done within the next week or two, and then that company has almost finished running the, their force line work, and then they're going to come back and start cleaning everything up, they've got that, where they saw cut point clear, they've got to do it, plus all their cleanup, as well as vegetation, as far as seeding and stowing and things like that. They should be completely done with everything within the next thirty days, and that's including cleanup. I think they'll probably get done a little bit sooner, but right now, they've got about thirty days in which to have it all cleaned up and have the project finished, yes, ma'am.
Could you get a little gravel thrown out there, one point clear?
A little gravel, like just in the road, or?
No, gravel where they, that cut through, that...
Yeah, they'll have to, well, actually, what they'll do is...
It's just starting to get a little...
They, in between now and the time they're paving it, I'll talk to utilities right there and have them mention that, yes, sir.
Charlie, I got a question about the water tower.
Okay.
If we had to paint the whole water tower, if we can just get the bottom part painted, somebody had mentioned that the other day.
Yes, at your October council meeting, we should have everything in place to be able to provide some options, I would say, and one of those options I do know includes just painting the, the base, but looking to bring all those proposals and, and financing options to council at your October meeting, yes, sir.
Good. Item number nine on the agenda, public comments, are there any more public comments? Please, step to the mic, state your name, address, social security number, no, only kidding. And...
Hi, I'm Ellie Prain, I live at seventy-ninety Captain's Court, and I guess this is just more of a question for the, Mr. Funderburke, Mr. Funderburke, so when is the line going to be drawn in terms of development, like in terms of, like more development in the community, because I know, like getting to school, traffic is a huge problem, so in terms of the project six four, four zero 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 zero, zero one, I don't know, I just am curious.
That's probably a longer conversation, but i- in, in a nutshell, the city does not seek annexations and developments. The landowners come to the city for a variety of reasons, usually it's for utilities, public safety, perhaps zoning, things of that nature. Each one's taken on by a case-by-case basis, you know, whereas one development the city and planning commission may look at is, that is something that is very favorable, we need in this community, or they may look at it and say, well, yeah, I don't really see the need for that, you know, at this point in time or things like that, so it's really a case-by-case basis, but as far as drawing a, you know, the line being drawn, I'm assuming that line is being drawn in the sand, so to speak, I don't know that it ever will be, you know, as long as there are property owners that are, that are wanting to sell their properties, enhance their properties, things of that nature, they're always going to, you know, if they're within proximity or adjacent to the city, they're going to come and, and have conversations with us. That doesn't mean that all of them are going to be approved, as you saw tonight, there was a, a very small development in front of council that they elected not to move forward with, so, again, it's a case-by-case basis, really is, so, kind of hard to say, yeah, we're done, or, you know, hey, we got another three years, and then that'll be it, I mean, it just really just depends on the projects that come our way.
The other thing is, is we don't have a lot of land, I mean, we, we have limits, the city can only go so far.
Very good point.
So even if we wanted to do something, we're going to be limited by our boundaries, for the most part.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for asking.
Close public comments, item...
Kathy? I'm Kathy Masters for seven-two point clear, I have two questions. One of them is, it's a little bit too late to do anything, but with the curb going in on TK Drive, I guess if I'd known about it ahead of time, there, for years, we've talked about how nice it'd be if it was set back just a little bit to make a bicycle slash golf cart lane, so before they, anybody curbs on the other side, could that be something that you think about ahead of time? It's, it's too late now for outbound, but maybe on the inbound, or maybe it could be painted differently, but we have a lot of bicyclers and golf cart people that get in the way of us car guys.
I think it's something we can definitely have a conversation with SEDOT about, I think one of the biggest problems we'll have is in a lot of those areas, you've got some private property lines that come all the way out.
And we also have some topography issues as well.
And there's, there's definitely some topography challenges, most certainly, but it's absolutely something we can have a conversation with DOT about, most certainly.
It seems like over, over the last fifteen or so years, that it's, it's come up more and more often in conversations that I've been. The other topic I have is that it, it seems like a lot of votes are taken, and that the public is not hearing the conversation as to why you voted for things or why you voted against things, and I'm getting questions, why did they do that? I said, I have no idea, I sat there, they took a vote, I didn't hear any conversation. So if you could think about it a little bit, when you vote for or vote against something that might be surprising to the public, that maybe you could have a little bit more conversation and let people know why you're voting, or why you're voting, why you're voting for or why you're voting against, that's all I have.
Good comment, thanks, Kathy.
Any other public comments?
Sue Galaski, Nob Creek Lane, we're talking about the roads, and one of the things, when you leave Turner Field and you go towards Seven Co's, the curve there is really bad, and I think years ago, we had a terrible accident there, and I'm just hoping that when we get ready to do something with the road, the inbound road, that, and I know we don't want the county to come and, I mean, you have the state to come and put up all these barriers, but I know that we could do something that could be covered with ivy or shrubs or something, if a car goes over there, they're gone, and it's just a real bad, you're, you're turning into that curve, you're not turning away from it, so I would like for you all to take a look at it if you have time, thank you.
Thanks, Sue. Yes, sir.
Bill Kreisman, Volunteer Fire Department President and former chief for twenty years. I'd just like to personally thank Charlie and George for... I'd just like to personally thank Charlie and George for all the work on this contract. It's been seven or eight months back and forth and a lot of work on our end. And I'd like to thank the time, the effort. And I'd also like to thank the city's commitment to the Volunteer Fire Department on behalf of the volunteers. We can always take more volunteers in. At one time, we had 50 with a waiting list. Now we have approximately 21. And we'd like to get that up. Some of the volunteers were actually hired as paid city fire department people. So thank you again.
Thank you, Bill. Any other public comments?
Bill, is there an age limit?
We're not interested in anybody over 100 years old.
Yay!
You still have time.
We had somebody just pass away last year that was 93. Joined the fire department in 1986. He was probably, I don't know, whatever. And he's between 65 and 70, retired college professor. And he served us right till the end. So.
Was known throughout the
We have jobs for everybody.
Was known throughout the entire county by every chief because of his dedication to fire services.
You're talking about Floyd Robinson.
I am.
He was 89, I believe.
Yep.
I was thinking about Gerhard Wegner. He was actually 96 when he passed away.
Yeah, there's.
Also Frank Holloway, as the college professor, and he was 93 when he passed away. So I think giving retired people, personally, I think giving retired people jobs during their retirement increases their longevity.
Agree.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Any other public comments? Hearing none, move on to council comments. Ryan, who starts off?
The rest of the high school students that are here, we need to get a list of you guys so we could recommend an A. Everybody else, we won't recommend an A.
Exactly.
How about that? But no, aside from that, I don't have anything.
Jen?
The beautification committee met last week and we are having a workday in the Livermore Gardens tomorrow morning at 8:00 AM. And so if you'd like to help for 30 minutes or two hours, whatever you'd like to give, that'd be great. And just bring some work gloves and a muck bucket. And then we will not be meeting until the third Thursday of October at 1:15 in the lower level of the Glenon Center.
Jen? Dottie?
First, I just wanted to say that I really enjoy the Tika K Rewind. I look forward to that every week. Katie, do you do that? It's very, I love it. So thank you so much. I really do, I really do look forward to coming. I always read it. In responding to Kathy's comment, I just looked at the agenda about votes we took and I assume there's one perhaps that's of more interest than others. So I'd like to say that I voted for the Villas at Gardendale because it fits into the comprehensive plan. It's only 28 homes, so I felt there'd be little impact in terms of traffic, et cetera, et cetera. And I also do believe that this type of home is something that Tika K residents are looking for. I mean, there may be others too, but there's only 28 homes. So, you know, whoever gets there first. So I was actually quite surprised that the vote went the way it did. So that's the only, I think that's the only one that people might care a little bit more about. But I take your comment to heart, Kathy, and will try, at least for my part, to do it again. I don't know what you're saying. Oh, the tower. Okay, now she wants to hear about that. See what I did?
Easy, easy on that one.
Yes.
Not in our best interest.
I think that one, we really do need to keep a little bit closer to the vest because it had to do with the contract situation and we took legal advice on that. Let's put it this way, we didn't feel it was in the best interest of the city. And obviously, with unanimous vote, it seemed that we all felt the same. And I'd also like to apologize for the coughing and blowing my nose, but I have a cold, so I'm doing the best I can. That's it for me.
Thank you, Dottie.
You're welcome.
David?
Well, at the risk of additional comments, and her time is up, I just want to wish a happy 39th birthday to Dottie. She had her birthday on September 17th. No comments, no more comments.
Oh, no, I have to say happy birthday to my fellow city council member, David O'Neal, who celebrated September 17th as well. He's much older, of course.
We risk it, so.
Other than that, and he's also doing much better on his low carb, low sugar diet than I am, but I'm going to catch up with him soon.
See, I knew that.
You look great, dude.
Thank you, thank you.
It's all right.
Only lost 30 pounds so far, got 20 more to go. Going to wither away, I have to, I can't even fit in my shoes anymore. Who would have thought I lost so much weight in my feet?
That's interesting.
It is interesting. My feet, my shoes are falling off. I had something else to say, but I can't remember now.
Because you're old.
Because I'm old. You had a birthday and you're coughing, I'm old, huh?
Yeah, we're a mess between us.
Okay, I was going to say something else, I can't remember. As soon as I walk out the door, I'll remember.
All right, so I can take the wish, Dottie and David, happy birthday off my list.
You can.
Joey Blethyn, our Parks and Rec Director is in Sports Illustrated this month.
Swimsuit, I know.
He's not in the swimsuit edition.
Not because of his athletic ability.
They, Joey made a decision in regards to where the city was going in regards to tackle football versus flag football and Sports Illustrated was interested in his comments. So I encourage everyone to go out and either see if you can find it online. But being the paper salesman that I am, go out to the store and buy it. So I encourage that. The other thing I want to talk to council and the city manager about is that I have received an abundance of comments and questions in regards to coyotes. It seems that the coyotes have decided to
They're back.
torture us a little more. So I had conversation back and forth with the city manager who told me that SEDNR would be willing to come and discuss the coyote situation with us at our next council meeting. I think I would like to see if we can have a public hearing or a public forum where you can come and address all of the residents and not just council. So I just got a reminder of Dottie's travel schedule because she's traveling a lot in the month of October. And we have the active shooter training on October 12th here. Is it possible that we can postpone that a month and see if SEDNR can come here on October 12th instead and open it up to the community so that they can hear the issues that we have in regards to coyotes and what we can and cannot do?
So when you said postponed it, I thought you meant postpone from October's meeting to November's meeting.
Postpone the active shooter, postpone the active shooter to November. And since council already has it on there, just have a public hearing. We don't, council doesn't have to, SEDNR can come here and, you know, council doesn't have to be here. If they can't make it, they can't make it, but if they can, they can. But SEDNR, give them the room and have them explain to the community as to what the situation is with coyotes, what we can do and what we can't do, what the pros and cons of each one of the issues are. So if the rest of council is agreeable to that, I think we should see if we can get them to do that.
It's fine with me.
October 12th. And then hopefully, that'll allow the community to hear what's going on.
We will check with DNR tomorrow.
Appreciate that. That's all I have.
Wow.
Item number 11 on the agenda is a executive session discussing personnel matters. Council, I handed you basically what we're going to discuss in council during the personnel matters. So if someone wants to make a motion to, I guess, table it or remove it from the agenda, unless someone wants to discuss an executive session.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to make a motion to table item 11, executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters.
I have a motion by Dottie Hershey, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ryan Richard. Any council discussion?
Mr. Mayor, when, oh, no, I'll just ask you later. It's okay.
Call the question, all in favor, single or saying aye?
Aye.
Unanimous. Item number 12 on the agenda is adjournment. Council, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Dottie Hershey, do I have a second? Second by David O'Neal. Any questions or discussions about it? All in favor, single or saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Safe travels, David.